I think it could be argued that there's no.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And our pastor's not here this morning. Clerk Strick, would you mind having an opening prayer for us?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together this morning to your attended business in the county. We thank you for your responsibility. We ask your blessing on all that's said and done here, and pray that all things are done good. Jesus, I thank you.
All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Hampshire County Commission meeting, Tuesday, February 14th, Valentine's We'll go ahead and get started. And we start with the minutes from our previous meeting. All three commissioners received a digital copy from the clerk, so I would entertain a motion to approve those or make any corrections needed at this time.
I move we approve the two minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the minutes from our previous commissioners' meeting be approved as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will move on to the presidents and commissioners' reports. I don't have too much to report. Lot of what I would report on, we're going to touch on in the agenda today, so I will take this time, though, however, to report our -- that we are live streaming now. You'll notice the little cameras that is making our meetings available on the Internet for those that would want to go and see that or watch that. And it's our effort as a commission to make our meetings even more public than they are required to be. We've done that in conjunction with offering half of our meetings in the evening, so that's our effort to go above and beyond in letting our citizens have the opportunity to see what goes on in our meetings. So I'll just let you all know that you're on camera when you come up, so I appreciate our effort from our technical guy, Aaron Cox there, and working with Clerk Strick to get that ready for us. So hopefully, it's working right and working good. And I'll take this, just a couple of minutes, to ask Aaron to explain that just a little bit, where he can go to see it and so forth, Aaron. If you would just take a minute or two to explain that for the folks.
Good morning, commission, audience. There's two cameras in the room, one that will project to the visitors and then one camera over here temporarily in place for projecting to commission. Audio is picked up from the microphones and can be picked up from the cameras as well. You can find the information at Hampshire County Commission's Facebook page. You can find it on YouTube, our Hampshire Commissioner, Hampshire County Clerk as well. So all that information is available there and is streaming live as we speak. So any questions, feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. So with that, I'll pass the floor on to Commissioner Hott for his commissioner report.
Okay. I -- well, matter of fact, all three of us have attended the Board of Review and Equalization. I think we've had three meetings and we haven't had any clients yet. We did have some concerns with our timberland management and I think we've got that, the assessors, got that under control now. I had a meeting with Richard Gay, who's the, along with the sheriff and the treasurer's office concerning maybe some amendments to our ambulance ordinance, and we're working on that, trying to get, if we make amendments, we're trying to get it done by April. I attended the Central Hampshire PSD meeting, which, to say the least, was, I think it was a frustrating meeting for everybody that was there. We had a report, or we had some concerns from Burgersville Water, the project there, from as far as getting right of ways. They have a problem getting it right of ways, the documentation down to them so they can get it out to the people that want to sign up for water. They're frustrated about that, as Central Hampshire is. And also, they met with the Development Authority concerning the transfer of the water and sewer system over to Central Hampshire, and that was also a frustrating event. We, I think everybody left frustrated. Well, maybe the lawyers didn't. I think they was okay, but everybody else was frustrated. It's something I think is, it's, there should be an easy fix to it, and when we get the lawyers involved, they make it more complicated. So hopefully, they'll get that straightened out. And, you know, I don't know whether people realize, but a lot of times when we do projects, especially with Central Hampshire, we agree to do the project, Central Hampshire does, and then basically, it's turned over to the engineers and Regent eight. And that's where we have, and they more or less control it from then on, just the same way as the Development Authority. When they have projects and Regent eight, or the engineers, like Thrasher was involved with the project at Capebridge, well, we're at mercy, really. We don't like to say that, but that's basically what it is. So we struggle with that sometimes because we, as the local people, really know, we think that we know best as to how we should, how things should be done, and it don't always work that way. So it was very frustrating, and some of the board members are here, I've seen America man, but it was a sort of a frustrating meeting overall. I attended the Farm Land Protection Board meeting, which was far better than the Development Authority, or the Central Hampshire meeting. And there was nothing really serious there that we, well, we did raise the, we raised the cap on the price per acre that we pay. I think we raised it a little better than 15%. I think we raised it from eighteen hundred an acre to twenty-one acre, or twenty-one hundred an acre. So that was the main thing we'd done at that meeting. Other than that, and some phone calls, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hott. Commissioner Cannon?
Thank you. Yeah, as Mr. Agniter said, most of my happenings are going to be touched on in the agenda, but I did attend a PBTA special work session. I will advise that we have been chosen as a hub for feasibility study. We were in pretty tight contention with several other transportation authorities in the state, so that everything kind of fell into place. The Grant County Commission offered a very viable piece of land to put the hydrogen hub, and the West Virginia DOT has really got involved, DOT Transit Division. So we're not across the finish line yet, but it's really starting to look promising and starting to get a lot more big players involved. And I talked to Keith McIntosh, who has put me in contact with Senator Manson's office, which is a big endorsement we need, being that he's Chair on Energy. But anyways, I don't want to overembellish, because we're not there yet, but we did have a pretty significant development. And the goal is to have a plant, also have storage, and also have a fueling station for hydrogen to fuel our bus fleet, and then eventually sell hydrogen to whoever will buy it and whoever will sign on. I did some research, because I realized that this is a significant amount of taxpayer money. And the biggest thing is people are scared of it. They all think of the Hindenburg, but if everybody would remember, gasoline is also very combustible, and it's become a lot safer since those old times. But anyways, emissions, you know, you basically just have water, you're separating hydrogen from the oxygen molecule and creating fuel with it, and it really could be part of the future. I think we've seen with these electric vehicles, they don't work in West Virginia. They have no travel distance, you know, the batteries die, you know, these buses are five, six hundred thousand dollars, and it's just not the answer. Everybody can pat themselves on the back for trying, but I do think hydrogen can really be a solution and something that we can bipartisan get involved in. It's, anyways, I don't want to sensationalize it too much, because we're, like I said, we're working. I did meet with the Development Authority prior to their meeting with the PSD to iron out some details. I think Commissioner Hott talked about it enough. We're making a mountain out of a molehill. We really just need to get this transferred and do what we can to see it cross the finish line, whether that be Capebridge getting involved or the PSD taking it. We can work it out without paying these attorneys thirty, forty thousand dollars apiece. We just need to get the egos and personalities involved that be and get it hashed out. I did meet with Darren Taylor, which I believe he's coming in today, so I won't talk too much about that. I did happen to, ironically, we're putting a roof on it, ran into Judge Carl at a house he owns, was just asking him a couple of questions about, I know the building commission was supposed to come in, and he assures me that our building commission seems to have some good ideas that fit everybody's need with moving the offices, probation offices, family court, et cetera, so everybody will be happy, and so that was good news. Did also talk to the prosecutor. Without going into major detail, she just had some concerns with retention and budget questions. Commissioner Hott also talked about Board of Equalization Review, which we've had several meetings and still some to do yet. Really went by with no major problems, other than the timberland management, which we know is a state issue, and we've got it rectified. I did call Mr. Hoff, or Mr. Hoff called me, or I called Mr. Hoffman. I had some questions about the generator, which I believe he's here as well, so I won't go too much further in on that. I did meet with Amanda Planning. Well, she's coming in, too. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cannon. It is nine fifteen, so we'll go ahead and start down the agenda. Our first appointment here is nine fifteen, Hampshire County Development Authority, request for matching funds for grant applications. So a few ladies would like to come up?
Guess they're going to put out the sacrificial lamb this morning. Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you for letting us.
There you got one.
Actually, we're here for two reasons, and what we would like to show you is a project that we've been working on most recently. I am the Vice President of the Hampshire County Development Authority, as well as their Marketing Chair, and we are part of the Eastern Economic Alliance, which was formerly known as the West Pep. And they were granted through Region Nine for the counties of Morgan, Berkeley, and Jefferson, and the Regional Airport, a seventy-five thousand dollar grant to redevelop their website and create videos for each of those counties showcasing their public properties that they have for sale, as well as businesses in the, in those counties, and what they have to offer, basically. We were granted a five thousand dollar grant that we matched, and for the same purposes, we had it to develop a two-minute video showing an overall view of our county, and then three thirty-second videos that we could use in any way, but how the other counties used it was pretty much just pulling out thirty seconds of their original video. We thought we could do a little better, so we split our county into two one-minute videos, one on the east side of the county, one on the west side of the county, because personally, I feel like we have a whole lot to offer, and I think each area deserves its own time to be focused on. The thirty-second videos, what we did is we interviewed approximately twelve different companies here inside of the county, asking them a variety of questions. Interviews lasted anywhere from nine to fourteen minutes, and we had to squeeze all that down into thirty seconds. So what we are planning to do, granted that we have future budget money to do this, we are going to reuse those videos and then pull out other sections from those videos so that we can continually use them for probably the next two years. So we are proud, if I have your permission, to show you the two one-minute videos, first on the east and then on the west side of the counties, and then if you will grant me permission, I'd like to show you one of our thirty-second videos, as well as our interview with Commissioner Cannon. Would it be okay to show that?
Yeah, go ahead.
We are a cut-and-sew shop based here in Hampshire County, West Virginia. Hampshire County is a great choice for our business. I really, truly feel like in Hampshire County, we have the best of both worlds. We have this beautiful country setting, plus we have a good infrastructure and fantastic employees. The Development Authority has been a driving force in our ability to be able to expand here in Hampshire County and to develop a workforce. People with good, solid work values, we don't have any trouble at all finding people to work for us. We typically have a waiting list, and we want people to be able to learn and expand their own horizons, follow their own dreams, while helping us produce a product. Well, our next step, we'll be able to build our own building and develop and have an even bigger workforce.
I think it could be argued that there's no bigger job for a commissioner as far as the boards that he oversees than economic development. I knew early on, long before I ran, that I was going to vie for a position on the economic development. We're working in every facet that you can think of in economic development, all the way from railroad spurs into our industrial parks, to industrial access roads, to water and sewer broadband, working with the local public service district. We're working with the school board to help build three brand-new schools, and really increasing the economic development authority's budget and leeway to create more programs in any industry that's clean, that's going to pay well, and bring our citizens opportunities. I don't think there's anything else that could be done or be done any better. The director's on it. We have subcommittees for everything to further delegate. Economic development, I don't think you could really overstate how integral it is to the success of a rural community.
Videos, and then, but using the voice and opinions of both Commissioner Cannon and Gina from Shanana Softcloth into those smaller videos as well. So what do you think?
I like it.
Nicely done, very nicely done.
And that, quite frankly, that's, this is the first time you guys have done anything like this.
Yes, sir.
It's, yeah, I'm really, yeah, I like that, I really do.
So the two, first two videos will be on the website for the Eastern Economic Alliance for site builders and things to see if they're wanting to come into this part of the country. And then they will also be on our website as well, which is being revamped, redesigned, and will be released, we are thinking next month, early next month, if I have my way about it, but next month for sure, and showcasing our county. The second reason we're here, and it was brought up slightly in those videos, is we are applying for two new grants to further our efforts here in the county. First being the development and design of bringing the rail spur into the Romney Business Park. The reason that we want to do that is multi-fold. One, it'll make the Romney Business Park more desirable in the eyes of site selectors because there will be another option as far as transportation in the park. We currently have a business in the park that also would utilize this rail spur, because they are currently having to go to Cumberland to pick up and drop off freight. But also, because we are not in a huge metro area, this would also provide another look at our county, because sometimes that is a hindrance for businesses wanting to move in here. What this grant would do, is what we're asking for is ten thousand dollar local support grant from you that would be payable only if we are able to get the USDA rural business grant. And what we're going to use that for is basically the development design and design of the rail spur, as well as looking at a loading docks, building for the railway building, and a maintenance area, and the cost to do that. The second one, since nobody's stopping me, is for, to look into the feasibility of providing a, creating a licensed daycare here in the county. That also would help with economic development in a couple of ways. One, people that are moving in here, that is very important to them, because if we, as locals, do not have a babysitter available, we go to grandma, aunts, uncles, whatever the case may be. But if we're having people move into this area to create jobs or come because of those jobs, then we need to provide this. It's so right on so many levels. One, we want children that are getting quality care, because they'll grow up to be quality people, they'll have social skills that they need to work in the workforce, as well as the beginnings of education. We all know and have heard the studies where children learn the most in the first three years. It also creates accessible childcare to those who already live here. As a businesswoman, I have lost many employees over the years just due to the fact they couldn't find qualified childcare. Unfortunately, you're not working with professionals in that area a lot of times, and, you know, they'll call you in the morning and say, you know what? they'll call you in the morning and say, you know, I think I want to go shopping today or whatever. I experienced that myself and I have seen many of the people that I have employed over the years and have lost over the years due to that. And I think it would also be another plug for the county, strengthen our site as well if we can say, not only can you bring your business here, we're going to support your employees by having this affordable daycare and licensed daycare in the county. And again, what we're asking for is $10,000 showing your, our community support that will only be payable if we receive the larger feasibility study grant.
Okay, so just for clarification, you're requesting, considering your grant applications here, two $10,000 matches if you were to be granted the USDA feasibility studies?
Right.
That's what we're looking at here?
Well, the one, yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have questions or comments, further details for these ladies?
Yeah, I do. On the, first off, on the rail spur now, so the study, if you get the grant, the, the study is going to be just, just for the rail spur? Is it going to be, you said for the rail spur?
No, it's going to be a design and also to let us know what it would cost to continue that project. So it would be for the rail spur, a maintenance building, loading docks, and a rail station located there in that Romney Hampshire, or Romney Park.
Okay, and you're aware that 10 years ago, I think 10 years ago, we asked, was you on there then, Development Authority?
No, I've been there a long time.
Didn't we ask the, the West Virginia Rail Authority for, I think it was 3 million? And what, do you recall what happened there? I mean, we asked, we asked them for that, to, for money for the rail spur. Do you recall what happened?
I assume it didn't happen.
I don't, I don't recall either. I'm just, I think I was on there, but I don't, and I'm maybe the mayor might, but I, so basically this, this study is going to be for property that the Development Authority owns now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's not, in other words, I'm concerned, we're not going to be giving any of this, anything to the, to the Potomac Eagle because it's a private enterprise as far as?
No, this is to create the spur into the Romney Business Park. Now, they may use the maintenance at some point in the future of the docks.
I understand that, yeah.
But no, this is for economic development into that park.
Okay. Because originally I was, to be quite frank, I was, I was, I was against this, but I, I've sensed I've done some thinking about it, but it's, it's all going to be within the Development Authority's purview, is that correct?
That was the last part of your question.
It's going to be within your purview as far as the, the funding?
Yes, sir.
And, okay. And then the other thing, on the, on the, on the childcare, where are we, as far as the study goes, are we concentrating in any certain part of the county?
Sir, we have not determined that whatsoever yet. There is a possibility, but that is so far off, we, we're not, I'm not even at liberty to say about that.
The only reason I'm asking that is I, we, well, the county don't, well, the county does in a, in a indirect way. Own property in Capen Bridge at the, at the middle school. And I think Commissioner Cannon, or Commissioner Eglinger had mentioned that sometime previously about it would be a good spot for childcare. Plus, the Board of Ed is also going to, we're going to have some vacant property in the Slingshoe area. And that was my concern since we, one of the, a county entity owns that property, it would be easier for me to support that than it would be to go to a, to a private enterprise. And if you look at both of those locations, like going down, people go down 522 to Winchester and they go 50, so that would be, that would be something that I would, I think we should be looking at. And we have a childcare in town, I believe. I think the Bank of Romney has one now, so.
But that's only for their employees if I understand correctly.
Yes, okay, you're right, yeah.
Yeah.
And wouldn't, wouldn't the, the study or the, the grant, what, what this grant would be doing for the, the application that you're speaking of, would, that study could help determine some of those factors that Commissioner Hott brings?
Exactly. Feasibility, this is just for a feasibility study as far as childcare. So that would all come into play from that study, you know, the need, locations, et cetera. And I agree with Commissioner Hott, those would both be great locations, but we're going to see what the study shows us too.
So that's, if I recalled right, on, on previous of, of those that we've done in the county, that it would take a lot of that into account as to where and what benefits and?
Right.
Interview citizens, et cetera, et cetera?
Right. But this is the first step. So we want to take advantage of these grants to get this nailed down basically, to, so that we can move on from, from what these studies show and see if it is something that we want to continue to pursue.
It will survey the entire county and identify where the need is. If, if they're, and like Commissioner Hott said, they may determine that, I don't know how they could, but that there isn't a need.
Right.
And that, and that's partly a question for, for the other commissioners. They're going to survey the entire area and, and not just a specific geographic area.
That is correct.
And that, so, you know, encompass the entire county and then if there's the major need in Capen Bridge, they'll let us know that, if there was a major, you know what I mean?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I've talked long and long, long and hard with everybody about this. I definitely support you guys. We're basically just seeing if it is possible, so it's worth a shot. And the big, big thing about the, I call it the railroad spur, but rail into the park, you know, is, is a lot of people think it's a shot in the dark or, you know. But before I, but right when I came into office, sealed air from Mineral County, which is a huge, well, in my definition, huge company that Mineral County's had for years and they wanted to expand, which was going to create several, several jobs, I don't want to misspeak, but it was, it was a plethora of jobs. And they were looking for competition because, you know, they've kind of got them by the short hairs over there because they, they've retrofitted buildings and they've been there forever. But long story short, the big thing that knocked Hampshire County out of those jobs is that we didn't have rail. They said, we can't even consider you. We bring all of our polymer beads to make all the plastic and the bubble wrap and on rail car, we can't even talk to you, so.
We're aware of those situations as well.
And, and although few and far between, it's, you know, it's not like you build a rail and then you got to maintain it every month. It's, it's, I don't know, it would make us more suitable and practical for a lot of businesses that would never look at us before.
Who's going to do the survey, Ben?
I don't, do we know that, or is that even?
You haven't selected, you haven't selected?
This is just a study for the design and feasibility, I guess.
We ran an ad several months ago and got some engineering proposals, but then we never pushed forward because we didn't have the, the funding to be able to hire them to actually do the design study and develop the project. We were working with Region 8 in this effort, so this is the next step to get us to the point, which is why it's a technical assistance grant, is we can hire one of those firms to be able to design the project and project the costs until we go to the next level, procure the funding to actually do the installation of the project in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, you ready to consider these two requests? We'll, we'll start with the request for $10,000 in matching funds for the grant application feasibility study for the railroad into the Romney Industrial Park.
I would move that we accept the request as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that the commission grant the request in the amount of $10,000 for feasibility study to the railroad to the industrial park in Romney. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. The second request from the Development Authority is for the childcare research and feasibility grant study as well. And that is, was in the amount of $10,000 too, if I'm correct.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, here a motion and a second for the, the second grant that I just stated. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Erin, for helping, wanted to say that.
I did write up commitment letters. Commissioner Erb?
Clerk.
Clerk. Has them. I don't know if we need to reprint them unless it left it out, but we do need to put the amount in. I left that part blank in case you guys decided on a different amount.
And if we could get those signs, we are on a very tight, tight deadline to get this submitted.
Childcare.
Sticking around after the, okay.
Yeah, since we already made the motions, he can just go ahead and sign, we don't have to.
Eric, you got a blue pen? Bob's got one.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you all. Okay, we will keep moving right along here and Hampshire County Building Commission in relation to the probation office project. And it looks like they just walked in here. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. I don't need a chair, I, I don't need a chair.
All right, you take that one, Tom. We spent all our money on the Judicial Center, we don't have good chairs.
We have to say this morning.
I'm just kidding.
We've been talking probation for a while, for years, has really outgrown their spot over at the Judicial Center. So we've been looking for a while now how to give them some more room over there and we had considered for a while, the, the back left portion, the unfinished, the closest corner here, finishing it off, moving probation upstairs. And we went through some plans, but at the last minute, we had an alternate idea of moving probation to the family court area possibly. We've looked through it and it would suffice, so in the alternative, move family court upstairs to the back left unfinished portion up there. And looking at the numbers and what's needed, we feel like we could do that a lot cheaper than moving probation upstairs. So we've, of course, Mr. Davis here, probation officer, he's looked at it and he says the family court would give us plenty of extra room for probation. And we've talked with some of the other parties over at the Judicial Center and judges and believe that we could make this work and just wanted to come to you all preliminarily to say, this is what we'd like to do and possibly drawing up some plans and getting some cost estimates and moving forward with looking at that. And that's why we're here today.
Okay, um, if it works and is suitable and it sounds like it might be cheaper, I would say that's a no-brainer to go ahead and just look at that and see what we come up with. And that's what you're asking is just, as preliminary, go, go and see?
Is there a possibility now, Mr. Hott had, he can draw up some plans and, you know, we'll, we have probation look at and we're going to talk to the family court judges, make sure everybody's okay with what we're proposing. I don't believe it would cost very much at all to make the family court area suitable for probation. I think it's, it'd be pretty quick, we could do that?
It'd be very quick and very easy.
What about, what about doing the, the family court upstairs, what's that, that's going to be, that's going to cost to, to change that room for the, for the court? Is Judge Stotler, is he still doing the family court?
He is, Judge Stotler and Judge Rock, two family court judges.
What happens, what happens if the elevator don't work?
Well, I guess there's always that chance.
I just, yeah, I just wonder, because he's, Judge Stotler has which?
We thought this would be a better idea, it's because of security too. So we think not only would it be cheaper, but it'd be more secure, so that way you just have circuit court and family court upstairs and then.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. I mean, I think, I mean, I never thought about it until I heard. And then since I heard about it, I think it's a, I think it's a, it's a no-brainer really to have it there instead of, you know, instead of moving probation up there, interfering with, maybe interfering with the judge and so forth. So, so we don't know that, we don't know the, did we, when we started this, Mr. Hott, didn't we, did we, did you do any, have any studies on that? Did we, did we do any bidding on that for, for the?
Our initial study was the plans, which we do have pretty close to a bid set-ready plans for probation on the second floor. We got a cost, you know, an engineer's rough.
Okay, what I'm getting at is we've already, we've already incurred expenses?
Expenses, yes.
Yeah.
However, the nuts and bolts of doing all this with office space, air handler, mechanical and all that stuff has already been accomplished in this, to move probation. So to redo some offices interior and some minor work, so it wouldn't be that much more to make that happen.
Commissioner Hott, I think you were at your Air Force meeting and Brian and I were there when we approved the engineering for probation. Remember that, Commissioner?
Yes, yes.
I think it was in the, the tune of eight to 12,000?
It was 8,200.
Eight, 200 dollars.
What was on that?
Air Force?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I knew my memory's bad, but I couldn't, I wasn't here, I guess, okay.
So have the nuts and bolts and all the mechanical, all the layouts have been done, so it would be very minor to shift offices around, open things up a little bit, meet less offices, so.
And we're also thinking, a lot of the family court stuff, we'll just go and move upstairs. I know one of the big costs, the second courtroom was the bench area, that we should be able to use the bench area, it's already down there, move it upstairs.
I'd move we approve the request as presented, gentlemen?
I'll second that.
Okay, I've heard a motion and a second that we approve the request of the Building Commission to change direction slightly in the movement of the probation office and family court. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you all.
Also, Mr. President, may?
Go ahead.
Darren Taylor requested that, and I thought, Mr. Davis, since you live on Donaldson, I thought you were a Mineral County resident, don't ask me why, I thought that, I apologize, I didn't mean to do that to you. But Darren asked if we could point Mr. Davis to the Criminal Justice Board as probation rep. So I, I don't want to forget, it's just something to think about.
Yeah, but that's, that's the next officio, right?
I believe, are you filling a citizen slot, Mr. Davis, or the probation? I think he's filling.
I think the probation slot.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an official capacity.
Okay.
So we don't have anybody for that role, so we got to take it. Just kidding.
You want, you want to appoint him, is that what you're saying?
Well, wasn't necessary, well, I guess it is, appointments are at the end of the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get it, if he's, I move that we appoint Stephen Davis to, as the probationary officer, slotted a day report corrections.
Thank you, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that Mr. Stephen Davis be appointed to the Day Report Corrections Committee as pro, filling the probation officer slot. State that correctly, gentlemen?
Nearly.
Nearly? Does it need amended?
No, no.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
More work, just what you.
Motion passed.
What you needed, Mr. Davis. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Been meaning to do that for three meetings. Keep forgetting.
Okay, next we have Tina Ladd from the Hampshire County, uh, CVB.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Normally our president, Peg would be here, but she's not able to be here today. So I'm just coming in front of you all to again request, uh, funding for the Hampshire County Convention and Visitors Bureau. The last two years, you all have given us additional funding. I think that we are, we're on the right path and we're growing every year. But with the new code put into place last year, because of the way that we need to, uh, apply 40% to marketing, 40% to payroll and 20% to operational. If you're only collecting 70, 75,000 in lodging tax, then it makes everything tight. So the additional funding would help us to continue to grow, move forward, keep us going for another year.
Okay, so that, that funding request is in regards to, uh, your, the general funding request like we do for the budget each year in March.
Correct.
That's, that's your.
Yes.
Request for that.
Yes, yes. And I think that Peg, apparently Peg McMaster has always presented to you all in February. So we just went ahead and, and stuck with the same schedule. But yes, it's for a general funding request. Yes, sir.
So that one, gentlemen, we would, uh, address at budget time, correct? Is that, is that suitable to you all?
Yeah, I would be in favor of continuing the funding, but, uh, just for the sake of discussion, but yeah. We, uh, you are requesting the same amount previously?
Yes.
Okay.
The same amount as last year.
How much was that?
That was 30,000 last year. The year prior, I believe it was 26 and some change, but then an additional eight came from, um, the, I want to call it the COVID relief funding, whatever that official name of that account was.
I remember that.
Yeah, yeah.
Was some ability to do a little more there because of the, I don't know what COVID funding it was, but it was.
Yeah.
Tina, when you, um, of course, which, this will have to wait till our, for our budget, but is there any way you can break down? You know, I know you've had a lot of, uh, I don't know, a lot of three or four events since you took over, which I, I thought were really, really nice and really, hopefully they were successful. Can, can you break down and, and give us, uh, a statement indicating how, how much those expenditures were and how much you brought in for those, uh, those events? Like the Farm Crow and, and you're doing another event in March, you're doing an event in March at Fairground?
Yes.
Sportsman thing, yeah.
We are, yeah.
Okay.
There was some information in this binder and it probably wasn't clear, but at the very, um, end of the paperwork that I had given to each of you, the, um, our budget information is the last several pages of that. But I can reprint to update and kind of give you a breakdown of last year and this year as well. Since I've taken the helm, you know, I can't really, I can print things from before that, but I don't, I can't really speak to the events or exactly what, what the monies were spent on per se, but yes, absolutely.
So you've got, you've got a financial statement for all of those, those investments?
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir. Yeah. Everything is, um, yes, I've learned QuickBooks in the last 16 months and how to budget. So yes, everything is, um, you have line items for every part of the budget. And of course, I'm told you stick to it as close as you, as you can, but it's kind of a map. But, um, still at the end of the year, when we submit to the state of West Virginia, we have to show that 40% went to marketing. That's, that's the main thing that they want to see. 40% went to marketing, you're, there aren't any amounts that can exceed your, your marketing amount. So you have a little bit of leeway on, um, like office supplies, because to be quite honest, you know, we don't really, that's where I found some extra, extra money, but, um, yes, I have to show where everything's going. And I can share that with you all as well.
You say you provided it to us already?
Yeah, it was in the binder and I have it here. You're welcome to kind of quickly look over this if you'd like.
You have the binder, like you have. Yeah. Uh, I can get your copy if you need it.
Can you disperse it to them? Okay, yeah. I was just looking to see if this is updated or not. But yes, I can give that to you.
Maybe I, my binder might be at the, in my office, maybe. I don't know. Did you give me a binder also?
Yeah, you have a binder.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I haven't looked at it.
Well, I don't know what to say.
That's all right.
You should. There's a magazine in there for you to look at. So, yeah, there's all kinds of good stuff, just a lot of information. A lot has been going on in the last year.
I know.
Yeah, yeah. And yes, our hunting and fishing show, what the official name is, the Potomac Highlands Sportsman and Outdoor Show, is coming along very well and I expect a really, really good turnout for that, unless there's really, really bad weather. So everybody just keep your fingers crossed and.
Hopefully good weather.
Hopefully good weather, yes, but there's been a.
A lot of interest.
Yeah, there's been a lot of interest and it's a really nice group. Um, there's a lot of people. I just put together a list last night and, um, there are about 34 different businesses or groups attending. All of those are from like the Potomac Highlands region. There are only two that are not. One is from Virginia and one is from Pennsylvania. Everything else is Hampshire County and our, our surrounding counties. So that's, I think that's really cool. And yeah, it's going to be, it's, it's going to be a good time. DNR is supporting us big time. They're going to come out and, and do some different things. So I'm getting off track, but yeah, it's going to be fun and, and, um, you all will be getting a reminder about that, March 11th and 12th for.
How, how are you advertising that, Tina?
We are advertising that on social media, in the Valley Trader. We have an ad in, um, the DNR Magazine, Wonderful West Virginia, that just came out. Uh, we're on the Hampshire Review website. We have a banner ad. Of course, on our own website. That's all I can think of right now. Hampshire Review, Valley Trader, social media, our website. And our partners, as they're starting to come onboard, are also starting to share. So, um, one of our, uh, one of our participants has 10,000 followers on their Facebook page. So when they're putting something out there, it's like really getting to people quickly.
Okay. Thank you for the, uh, information and like, like I said, we will consider that at, when we review the budget in March.
Okay. If you have any other questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Okay, and we will follow that with Mr. Logan Mance, Cape and Bridge Founder's Day funding request.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a, uh, new one for me, not a new one for you. Peg McMaster is out of town and has asked me as a new member of the Founder's Day Committee to come and present the annual request to you guys. I know that you all are probably as familiar or more familiar than I am with Founder's Day, its success. I think they've got 13 years running now. The cool thing that they've been doing in Founder's Day is they've actually been putting out surveys and collecting data so that they can find out who all is in attendance and who all is participating. They've been ramping up the family features. So they've got the Woodsmen's Competition. They've been doing car shows, but a lot of stuff for kids. They've been doing jump houses. When I reviewed the survey data from, uh, last year, so I think they had 3,800 attendees, if I remember right, between the two days. What I was particularly impressed with was the fact that even though the goal is to pull people into the area, there were a ton of Hampshire County residents that used this facility or participated in this event. So it's just another really cool, family-focused event that a lot of our citizens are participating in. It's, it's free admission and there's a lot of stuff to do for families. I think the request is the standard request that they've been bringing to you guys. It's 2,500 dollars for a contribution. Uh, I know that they are also pulling funding from, uh, other available sources to make this thing happen. But they've done it enough times now that they've managed their budget efficiently and have been able to stay in the black. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them to the best of my ability. Admittedly, I am new to the committee, but also very excited to be working with these folks. It's all community volunteers that just do this for the good of the community and they've been able to get some pretty cool results with it.
Yeah, Peg has really, uh, well, her and Lynn Booth have really, um, done a good job with this since they've.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they come into our county and just fit right in and they, they got involved in volunteerism. And matter of fact, we just, uh, the, the CVB here, when, when Tina came up, when Peg got on the board, quite frankly, that's when the CVB started to, to move forward. It, it has sort of been stagnant, but she's, she's really, uh, she really does a good job.
They're definitely a community-minded group, the group that's doing this. Like I said, I've only, I've only just met them and kind of got my head into how I can help. But it's, it's impressive to see that it's just members of the community that want to make the community stronger.
Can you touch on the direction of travel analysis, if you didn't already?
So, direction of travel and then look at the origins page. I think there was a ton of them from like Highview in the eastern end of the county, Cape and Bridge area. I think there were a bunch from Springfield too, if I remember right. But it was, I expected whenever I looked at the numbers to see the majority or a lot of folks coming in from out of town. And although there are a lot of folks coming in from out of town, I was really happy to see that this is something that's happening here in the county and that our county citizens are able to enjoy. So it was, it was just cool to see those numbers.
It seemed like it's gotten a lot bigger since we were little.
So, yeah, it pretty much started out, uh, like you, you can remember the yard party. So there was kind of always something that was going on there. But yeah, they've got, I forget how many vendors now, but they've just, they're really dialing in the recipe too for like what makes it successful and, you know, uh, just a fun, fun event and they've.
It's, it's interesting to look at the, what draws people in and.
Yeah.
And, uh, because she has that here on her graphs and, and no matter how unique you get with what you bring in, food always ranks.
Number one.
It's, it's, food's always a big draw. And this graph shows that.
Yeah, having the survey information available to refine your plan is, it's just a really cool thing that shows like this is, it's being deliberately done.
Working, what's not, yeah.
That, that is nice to have when you're, when you're supporting a, uh, festival or an event to, to see the, the workings of it and how it works. So I, I appreciate that she does this for us.
Well, I'll, I'll relay the message and I'm sure it can be a sustain going forward.
I would move that we approve the 2,500 dollars in support of the Founder's Day Festival.
I'll second that, but we have to wait till we do the, the budget to really put that in, okay? I mean, normally, it'll, it'll go out of next year's budget, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and second that with.
Yeah.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that, uh, upon review of the budget in, in March for next year's budget, that the commission, uh, strongly consider the, uh, 2,500 dollar continued support of Founder's Day Festival. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. If we've got another minute, I know that this item didn't get on the agenda, but I wanted to give you an update just because I'm in the room on the school street project in Cape and Bridge.
Yeah, update's fine.
So, yeah, no action required. We're not violating OGMa. We are wrapping up phase two, which was the underground installation of the stormwater and median right there on School Street. You all provided a grant, uh, for under our ARPA funds to get that second phase done, uh, for 136,000 dollars and I think some change, uh, last year. Just wanted to let you know that the project is moving into completion. We anticipate that as the asphalt plants open up in the next couple of weeks, we'll actually be able to finish the capping and then we're going to move into painting. We're dialing in on one last invoice for painting the stripes to kind of get some directionality established. But that's the last item that we're hammering out and I'm very pleased to announce that we are under budget. So we anticipate that we're actually going to be able to return, uh, an unused amount. I think it's going to be around 10,000 dollars that we were able to save through careful management of public funds. Gary's excavating, did an awesome job. Mary Billings was an invaluable volunteer in this. Uh, she's an engineer and then kind of stepped us into the project. But we're not at a, we're not at victory lap here, but we've got a really cool piece of it, uh, in the ground and done. And then the next follow-up piece, I think of at least good news, is that we reported where this was, uh, down to our legislators when they went down to Charleston and seeking some additional help. Because the biggest problem here on this street was how do we get the paving paid for? So once we were able to get the pipe in the ground, Delegate Thorne and, uh, Darrell Cows of the Governor's Office met with the Secretary of Transportation, brought up this project and apparently the meeting went very well. There's no hard promises, but it sounded as though the director or the Secretary of Transportation indicated that the DOT could take a look at this project and could advance it forward. So it was a very, very bright light at the end of a four-year tunnel. We're still not there yet, but just to kind of give you guys an update on where your funding went, where the project's going and then the impact that it could potentially have. So wanted to just present that to you and say thanks.
Thank you.
We did, uh, also approve, uh, parking rec, repaving the, the courts down there and, and new, all new HVC on the building. I don't know if you heard that, so.
There's, it's, it's.
It's good for Cape and Bridge.
It's cool. It's really cool. So.
Yeah, it gets used a lot. I was, I was there Sunday and there was probably 50, 60 cars in the parking lot and. People parking down, down the street. So it's, it's overflowing with use.
As we get more updates, I'll be sure to bring them to you, but if you all have any questions, I mean, please don't feel, you know, feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, we are running slightly behind schedule and, uh, Mr. Darren Taylor, from South Branch Valley Day Report, and here in regards to his grant application. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Morning, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
It is that time of year again where, uh, grants are being written and applying for money so that we can continue to operate and possibly expand, uh, what we're doing for the communities with, uh, South Branch Valley Day Report Center. Of course, we operate and serve three different counties and this is the parent county for our organization. It's the, uh, it's Hampshire County Commission doing business as the South Branch Valley Day Report Center. We also support Hardy County and Pendleton Counties. Right now, we are currently operating under eight different sources of income. Community Corrections Grant, COSAP Grant, the, the SEEP or Telehealth Grant, an Esper Grant, Adult Drug Court, DHHR billing that we have and parole monthly service billings and then fees that are paid by offenders that come in and are part of our program as referred by the courts. We're looking for renewal for the Community Corrections Grant that we've had and this is a grant that's funded the operation since, uh, the inception of the Day Report Center. It's a state grant. It does require a local funds match. The previous award that we had was for 190,000 and this year we're looking to, uh, try to get 271,000 with, uh, 83,000 dollars local funds match. That local funds match is easily, easily met by what we have going out as far as our testing supplies, any lab fees. Was careful this year to actually only put in the 30% cap. Was careful this year to actually only put in the 30% cap. We've been in operation long enough that now the grant requires at least a 30% matching funds for what we have and didn't add anything additional, although we will certainly be spending more than that in support of the program. Grant will be used to pay the salaries of existing employees, a director, two case managers and one administrative assistant that is currently paying for. And then we're looking to hire another administrative assistant, one for our Hampshire County office and at least one other counselor or therapist to be able to support what we have as far as treatment for both Drug Court and for the Day Report Center clients that we have. There won't be any additional spending coming from that grant and in the past it's been just that way. Only the salaries have been paid for out of that grant and the matching funds pay for the rest of what we, what we have with that. Again, that is a state grant and runs on a state fiscal year. That grant application goes out in March. I have the whole grant here if you would like to look at all the details. There's, there's a lot, there's about 100 pages in there. The Justice Reinvestment Grant is a grant that we have not been awarded in the past. We did apply for it last year, however, the funding at the state level was taken away from the grant before applications were all even submitted, so. It is a state grant. The request we'll have on that will be for an additional $167,000 and it has no matching funds request whatsoever. That money will be used to hire and pay salaries of a therapist or drug and alcohol counselor, three peer recovery or recovery coaches. We do have three offices and right now we currently have one recovery coach on, on staff that is a dedicated recovery coach. It'll pay for travel and training of those staff members and also pay for supplies related to the position like laptops, mobile phones, printers, office supplies that they would need for that. The third and last one that I have with me today is a new federal grant, which is for the expansion of Drug Court treatment capacity. There's no prior awarding of this grant. We are operating on two other federal grants at this point with the Esper Grant and the Telehealth Grant. This request will be for $318,000 and it is renewable for up to five years as long as we're meeting the objectives of the program. It'll go to pay the salaries of existing employees right now, the directors, it'll pick up a 10% portion of the director's salary and we'll take the one therapist that we have on staff and move her into the federal grant for payment and then pay for two new therapists that will have about a 75% capacity for working for Drug Court and providing for Drug Court participants that we have, because right now we have one therapist that can, it just caps out the number of participants that we can have for Drug Court. We, we have additional therapists who'll actually be able to provide more services to Drug Court and that translates into billable services so we can add to our sustainability and try to increase that. Like to get a recovery coach specific for Adult Drug Court. The one we have right now is doing double duty for all of our DRC clients as well as Drug Court when necessary. And because part of our agreement with Drug Court is to provide transportation for the Drug Court participants wherever they need to go, whether it be for classes or it be for doctor's appointments, sometimes we, we have people that haven't been placed into homes yet and they're still sitting at the jail, so we will transport them back and forth so they can get the benefit of the recovery training. Two transportation specialists will aid in that, one that'll be stationed out of our Hampshire office and the other one out of Hardy. We're hoping that with the addition of staff, we'll be able to provide services in both of those locations for Drug Court as well as Day Report and just have a bigger footprint and be able to serve more people in the communities that we have. Right now, a lot of the participants that we have coming from, coming to Hampshire County, some of them are coming from Hardy County and even Pendleton and they're making it all the way to the Day Report Center here in Romney for classes. We'd like to be able to offer some more of those classes, a little bit closer to them and make the drive a little bit less necessary. That grant will also pay for the supplies necessary for positions and curriculum necessary for the, the Drug Court programming. And we are hoping with this grant to be able to increase our Drug Court capacity from the approximate 25 that we've been at right now for a little while. Like to be able to take that up to 45 within a five-year period. The way that Drug Court actually allows us to bill, which is Drug Court's a Supreme Court, State Supreme Court program, right now we're billing just by the day when they come in for services. Doesn't matter if we do therapy, we have testing for them, we have classes, we get one amount that we get per person per day. With the next fiscal year, they're supposed to go to an à la carte, so every single service that we provide for them will be billed separately, which means for us that if we can add to what we can do with therapy, we can add to classes that we can provide, that's going to translate into more invoisable services that we can use for sustainability for the program and hopefully use a lot less of the county's money to operate.
Really, all three have no, you're not asking for any match from this body?
No, the, the matching funds that we have currently from all three counties and there's an equal match from all three counties has agreed upon and it's been the same amount for years.
Sure.
That goes only towards the Community Corrections Grant. That's the only one that has a, a matching amount that's required, so, and that 30% is there.
You've got that taken care of with the, of the three counties, is what you're saying?
All three counties have agreed to the, to the match.
What they normally do.
Yep, the same, same one. And we're doing our best to try and show where we're using those monies in the counties. Right now, we're looking at the Pendleton County matching funds and trying to translate that into a, an office space there that's actually owned by the county, so it's with the Economic Development Authority. We're looking at that, there's nothing concrete on it, but if we can use that money and show that the money from the counties are, are going back into programming in, in their individual counties, we try to do that.
When's the deadline on the, the Community Corrections?
March 6, I believe, this year.
So you've already got it ready?
I have everything ready to go. The only thing I'm waiting for on the federal grant is a letter from the judiciary to increase Drug Court, that they will go along with our programming and the commitment to, to try and increase the number of participants we have based on what we can do through the program. And again, that one's a five-year grant, so I think all in all, if we get that grant, we're looking at close to one and a half million dollars over five years that we can use for, for operating that program.
A lot of diplomacy.
Yeah, yes.
And I don't think I could overstate Mr. Taylor's diplomacy with the different entities from the previous director and the hatchets that he's buried in order to rebuild this program. And yeah, I just wanted to take a minute to commend him for keeping our county matches as low as he can and, and all while growing the program and keeping as many people that are nonviolent out of jail and, and, you know, have them pay for their own rehabilitation rather than the taxpayers. So I really appreciate you, Darren. I, I think, I don't think I'm exaggerating at all when I say you're one of the best hires that I've been involved with in the county. Appreciate that.
Speaking of the increase on that, we have actually seen a marked increase in our parole services that we're able to offer. Reached out and talked to the parole supervisor out of Martinsburg for this area and that translated into an increase immediately, within hours of parole referrals that we were getting and we've already, and I shudder to say this, but we, we've already quadrupled what we had from last year on our parole referrals and the parole referrals work much like the state Drug Court participants. We get a certain amount for every day that they come and we provide services for them. So all we do is build that directly to the state. That state money that comes right back into our program, which is a county and state program, goes right back into, you know, paying for itself. So it's, it's worked out pretty well.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
If I may, I'll move that we authorize the request from the South Branch Valley Day Report Center for the, to allow Mr. Taylor to, to go ahead and apply for the Community Corrections Grant for $271,054, the Justice Reinvestment Grant for $167,193, and then expansion Drug, Drug Court Treatment Capacity Grant of $318,392.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the commission to grant the request for grant applications presented by Mr. Taylor, as just stated by Commissioner Hotte. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
There will likely be two more grants that are going to be coming up. They run on a, a federal fiscal year, so they should be coming in, I'm guessing by April, the, the grant application should be available for me to be able to apply to renew those. And they are grants that we have had in the past and they, they should be able to be renewed without a problem.
Darren, have you been following the opioid lawsuits?
Not lately. I know, I'm aware of it. I haven't, haven't followed it in the last couple of weeks because this has been my life for a couple of weeks, just putting these grants together.
Sure, I'm sure, yeah, yeah. I guess case in point is, is a large pool of monies and, and very small percentage of it comes directly back to the counties that were, well, governing body, associations, if you will, counties and municipalities that were affected. And the larger percentage of it will have to be petitioned for grants and as I was looking at a lot of the approved uses for these monies, a lot of this pertains to what you're into.
Right.
So something to think about and maybe...
We can, we can find some use for some of the money if they have it available. There's always stuff in the Day Report that's, that we need, if we can hear Mark.
Something to think about.
I'm also right now involved, last year I was involved in the petition to try and get Hampshire County placed into HIDA status. It's a status, the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Status. There's a large pool of federal money that goes to, to counties that are included in that. Mineral County got added, I believe in 2018 or 2019 and translated into so much.
We tried to do it, I believe, we, we weren't chosen.
It was unsuccessful last year. I know it didn't, I don't think any county in West Virginia was added to it. This year, I've been in contact with the, the HIDA Task Force Director and we were talking about it and there's actually another, there's a US attorney that's involved right now in heading up the petition for Hampshire County. So we're all working together, trying to get letters of support and trying to get that. So with, with Hampshire County being involved so much with that drug task force anyway, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense for them not to, to have some of the money that's available for the training, the equipment and everything necessary to be, you know, to be a, a, a large part of that program. So if we can get that, I know that there is, there's a lot of money in that HIDA designation that is earmarked towards recovery. So opioid response, that's a lot that we could use. There are other DRC directors that have taken advantage of that and their programs have benefited a lot from the money that's available on the federal side. So that's, that's another thing that works.
Okay.
Thank you, Darren.
Good? Thank you.
What's the likelihood of getting the increased amount?
I think there's a very good chance of getting the increased amount. Hopefully, I tried to articulate it in the best I could, but hopefully, hopefully, three grand amounts will be enough to, 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 to. Okay, next we have Mrs. Amanda Barnes, our compliance officer with a cell tower permit.
Morning.
Good morning.
Update for the antennas at the cell tower for Flowing Springs Farm Lane out, down right here.
Did Rev Renewables come in at Ben Fisher?
I have spoken to them, but they're not planning to present until, possibly.
Who's that? I didn't hear what he said.
Um, Rev Renewables.
The solar?
Oh, okay.
Out in the Augusta area.
Yeah, I just wanted to say for the record, they, they're moving forward without the Commissioner's pilot program. They're moving forward on their own accord.
Um, I think their roadblock right now is the fire marshal, that their access roads are efficient for fire truck apparatus and turning around and...
Will Chris inspect electrical and?
Yes.
Okay, good.
They will have to pay their permitting fees and all inspection fees.
Good, good.
But unfortunately, there's nothing that says they can't do what their intention is on.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we had some backlash, there's a lot of people that don't want it and as I said before, whether they come or they don't, we'll get the blame, but we did not, you know, like you said, we can't stop them from coming and they're a private enterprise.
The state of West Virginia...
And we did not give them any tax breaks to come here, for the record.
But the state of West Virginia does require decommissioning bonds, so...
Yeah, and they do have decom...
They will be, they will be held accountable for cleaning up.
Thank you, yeah.
Well, you know, this is not on the agenda, but they should, the planning commission should make sure that, that when they, when they approve this thing, that there's decommission plans and everything in place.
Yes.
They shouldn't just automatically approve everything, they should...
No, it's not going to just come through and be approved, it will go before our boards if it is one of the newer...
Yeah, because it's not a done deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the, the state of West Virginia does require decommissioning.
And if you look at other states, there's a lot of, Pennsylvania's having a lot of problems with putting these things on farmland. Of course, we haven't said anything yet, but...
So, just for clarification for the audience, this is a cell tower permit, a simple cell tower permit. That's not what we were talking about there. Obviously, that was just a, some information brought up by Commissioner Cannon about the solar project, which the Commission elected not to take their offer of a tax break to come here. So, but what's on the agenda here is our...
I move the cell tower permit for...
Yes, I move we approve the permit as presented by Hardy Cellular.
Okay, I got two motions. Bob motioned first. You want to second it there?
I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry, Bob. I'll second, I'll rescind my motion and second Commissioner Hot's motion.
Okay, okay. So, moved and seconded that we approve the application for the updates on the Hardy Cellular Telephone Tower at Delray on Flowing Springs Farm Road Lane. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Yeah, I apologize, Mr. President.
No, no, that's fine. That was pertinent information. I just wanted to make it clear what we were moving on there. We are just a little bit behind schedule, but we will move right on to Ms. Erin Timbrook, our Grant Coordinator, and she has grant applications details to present us.
I do. Today I bring to you two applications for ARP funds, one for the Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management and one for Central Hampshire PSD. Both are for generators. Both I have forwarded to you previously to look over to see if you had any questions. I don't know if you guys want to vote on those today or if you want to hold off. That's completely up to you. And then I also have three applications that I just need signatures for. There's no matching funds required. The first one's our yearly EMPG grant where we'll be asking for $54,339 for reimbursing for our salaries. We're also asking, under the Homeland Security Grant Program, for an EOC upgrade of $25,000 and then an additional portable generator through the Homeland Security Grant Program for $116,000. For those applications, I just need the conditions and assurances signed. Typically, we don't have to have those signatures until they're awarded, but they've changed the process this year.
Okay. So, gentlemen, we want to consider the three applications there, the yearly ones with no match first.
Sure.
Then we'll ask questions about the two that she presented first there. But first we'll consider the ones just discussed.
You mean the three that don't require any grand...
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I move we approve those grant applications as presented by Mrs. Timbrook.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the Hampshire County Commission approved the three grant applications. And could you state what those are for us there, Erin?
Homeland Security Grant Program for an EOC upgrade of $25,000. A Homeland Security Grant Program for a portable generator. And then the EMPG for $54,339 for reimbursement of salaries.
Okay. All those in favor of approval of those three grants applications, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. And then I believe you had some requests for generators.
Yes.
Gentlemen, do you have further questions or comments for Ms. Timbrook on that?
Okay, that's the generator for down at the pumping station at Grass Lake?
Yes, that is the first one. And the second one is a portable generator.
Good. Is this... Okay, yeah, as far as I'm concerned, this, this, this generator is really needed during our last ice storm we had. It, that generator, I think it threw the piston, am I correct? It went down.
It was a old generator.
It was an old generator and we were able to get, to get a generator from Hardy 911. It was a portable generator. They let us use for, I think, four, three, four days.
Yeah.
And if we hadn't had that portable generator, the people in Augusta would have been out without water. And I think it's imperative that Central Hampshire have a, have a generator at that pump station in case of power outages that seem to be happening more frequently than not. That's just, that's just my comment on that, on that generator.
Mr. Cannon, you have any questions?
No, I don't. I support both of these. I mean, they, believe me, I think all West Virginians, especially Hampshire Counties, know how important generators can be and they save the day in a lot of respects. Only question, well, I did have one question. How long did we get out of the last generator that we're replacing and what are we doing with the old?
Yes, sir, yeah, Mr. Hall.
The generator, the old generator, we got from the old hospital. And it was old when we got it. It lasted, I'm thinking, three or four years. And we managed it. We had a yearly maintenance agreement with the company to commit maintenance. It just was old.
It's completely shot?
I filed a claim with our insurance company. I haven't heard anything back. I don't, I don't think we'll get too much back on that.
Yeah.
Pardon me? It's been a good while. It's been longer than three or four years, I think. But it's just been a while, yeah, yeah, I think so. But I don't know exactly, Jim. I know it's been longer than that, I'm sure. They don't think about generators, you know. You never, you never need, they just seep through. But in this case, I mean, the whole, everything east would have been without water, you know, from Harvest Hills all the way down to the other side of Pleasant Dale. And it's just, it's just imperative that we have that. And this, as far as I'm concerned, this is what that ARP money is for, is for infrastructure.
Well, that's, I was going to point out, this is American Recovery Plan applications. That's at least what Ms. Timbrook has presented us. So, are we going to consider these together, gentlemen, or they probably should be separate, two different ones for Central Hampshire PSD generator in an amount of $90,000?
I move we approve the request of Central Hampshire for the ARP funding for the generator at Grass Lake Pump Station.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. If we approve the grant application for American Recovery Plan Funds, ARC money, for the purchase of a generator for Central Hampshire PSD. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I'll add for the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in to explain things to us there when we needed you. The second application is very similar and this is a portable generator in the amount of $74,470 for HSEM.
Okay, I move, I move that we approve that request from HSEM. And moving that, and somebody will second, we'll do a little more discussion.
Second.
Okay. As far as further discussion, we, in talking about that storm we had, one of the dilemmas we had with Central Hampshire, of course, this is, this is going to HSEM where it can be, it can be moved around for anywhere. And one of the dilemmas we had was we were pumping water and we were pumping water, I mean, everybody in Augusta and Harvest all had water. But the sad thing is some of the sewer lines are not grabbed, so we have grinder pumps there. So, we needed, we needed a portable generator to activate some of those grinder pumps and we didn't have that. And the reason we needed that because they're getting water, they're flushing their commodes and doing, and it's going into the sewer, but the line is filling up. So, we had a dilemma and what we had to do was call a couple of septic tank companies and they come out and had to pump these lines. Because if they didn't, they backed up in, they backed up into your house and a lot of people's houses. So, that was the dilemma that we had there without having a portable generator to get these grinder pumps going. And Central Hampshire is now working with the engineers. Maybe in the future, we won't have a problem, whereas you only have to, you can only turn one or two grinder pumps on at a time. So, anyway, that's, that's one of the reasons for this portable thing, that we can move it around over the county wherever we need it. And a lot of the fire companies have generators, not a lot of them, I think.
I think all of them.
All of them. A lot of the fire companies have generators, but it's just something that during a time like, like we had with that storm, I think, I think it's money well spent.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second on the floor for the approval of the $74,470 for a portable generator, which is approved usage of ARC funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed.
Hey, Bob, are they diesel? Are they diesel generators?
I do have one more request. If you guys have time at the end, I'd like to go into an executive session for some personnel issues.
Okay, I can grant that. However, I'm going to, since we're at the end of the meeting, I'm going to go ahead and offer the public comment session first and we'll go from there. So, at this time, I would entertain any comments, questions from the public and I'll just put that quick reminder in there that anything that's not on the agenda, we can't deliberate on or make a decision. Yes, ma'am. I thought I saw you raise your hand. No, the $10,000 that the Development Authority requested was, was to do all the, to hire a company to do all the research to see where it would be best suited and why and who and where, you know. But, you know, to answer the question as to, you know, perhaps it might be in a, in a county building, but I, I would assume that the, you know, the county wouldn't want to take on the responsibility of the daycare center itself. That would be contracted out to a, you know, an approved licensed daycare, you know, company or person. Was that, does that answer your question? Yeah, that would be my, you know, and we're, of course, we're not to that point yet, but that would be my, my personal opinion of it, is that the county government wouldn't want to get into the daycare business. We would certainly want to encourage somebody to come by, you know, doing this study and finding out the best ways to do it and maybe, you know, give them that information. But I don't, I don't think the county wants to be in the daycare business. That's, that wouldn't be my, my goal at all.
No. You look at Hardy County, they have a, in my opinion, a pretty decent model. It would, and I think that this is where the Economic Development Authority got the idea. And it's virtually, almost essentially exactly what Commissioner Agnes was saying, where we do the preliminary studies, you know, display the need, help with the facilities and then kind of hand it off, you know, kind of like the multi-tenant building, you know what I mean? Or, well, it's probably not a great example, but helping the facilities and show the need and make grants available and help with the coordination. But then private enterprise would have the bulk of the liability and run the business and just kind of helping along. Well, it's clearly here. Well, so you're saying that there's a not, I'm not... It's just the public comment section. I don't need to respond.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, I haven't closed the meeting.
I'm sorry, you're busy guy. No, you're fine.
We pray for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, Ralph, you have a question?
No, just a comment. I was fortunate enough to be in northern Minnesota in February last Friday. Actually walked around the county's trailer. Got an email this morning. They're waiting on the ship to show up. We should have a trailer for the recycling at the end of this week or...
Okay, thank you for that update. Good news.
Nothing like Minnesota, northern Minnesota in February.
Yeah, I bet. Did you like the looks of the trailer?
I did.
Good.
It's got actually wireless remote on the operations, so you're not dealing with anything like that. Other than obviously the cable that goes up to the bins.
And just for, for the public's awareness, that's, that question or comment from Mr. Ronkin was in relation to our trailer to transport cardboard with our recycling effort here in the county. So, yeah, provided by REAP Grant that Clerk Strite and Mr. Ronkin and the board had worked pretty hard on there and they're moving along and expanding our recycling opportunity in a good and responsible way, in my opinion. So, thank you for that. And with that, I'll close the comments session of our meeting and...
Mr. President, before we go into the executive session, I think with the approval of the request of Ms. Timbrook, I'd like to appoint Robert Roach to the 911 Advisory Committee. Robert is a, is the fire chief at Cape Bridge. He's also the Vice President of the Fire Association of the County. And he'll be a good asset to the 911 Committee, Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay. And under the meeting maintenance and appointing... meeting maintenance and appointing board members, it's been moved and seconded that we allow Mr. Robert Roach to serve in the position for.
911.
911. Advisory Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Yeah, yes, tomorrow night the meeting is. I want to move you go into the executive session.
Yes, did, Eric, did you have something quick you wanted before we went in? We'll, we'll do, yeah, go ahead with that, and then we'll.
Request a point and request a promotion.
Mr. President, I move that we, we honor the sheriff's request to appoint Clerk Morgret to the position of Deputy Sheriff effective February thirteenth.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the request for final approval of Clerk Morgret's appointment to the position of Deputy Sheriff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Then the second request from the sheriff, gentlemen?
I would move that we honor the sheriff's request to promote John Smith to the rank of corporal and increase his monthly salary to four thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents.
Second.
Okay, it's also been moved and seconded for the promotion and pay increase for Corporal Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Mr. President, I move we approve the, the exonerations presented by the sheriff, both of them were clinical errors.
Okay, these are exonerations presented by the assessor's office.
Just clerical errors, I, I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
These exemptions are okay if you want to look at them real quick, but if I'm sorry.
Who's presenting these, Commissioner, if it's not Gigi? Who, who's taking over? Who is it? Ah, I would move that we accept the exemption requests as presented by Mr. Malcolm.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the exemption requests on ambulance bills. Research and presented, and presented by Mr. Malcolm, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.